In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Any citizen wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Who's to approve?
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We do have a recognition of a donation. For a $250 donation to social services from American Crystal Sugar, along with a $30 donation from Walmart to support May as Foster Care Appreciation Month. Thank you to them for those donations. And our item number two is our Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council Report. Carolyn Sternad.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you want to pick up the minutes?
Oh, did I miss that? I apologize. The April 17th minutes.
Who's to approve?
We have a motion to approve as presented and a second. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now Carolyn, thank you. I put the check mark on the wrong column.
You were moving so fast.
Always.
Good morning. I'm elected to put one thing in your packet. So, hat off the press. Over.
Thank you.
Who do I call brochure.
All right.
Oh, all in one place, isn't it nice?
Yes, all in one place for us. That's what we need. So, I chair the Children's LAC along with Amanda Brandt, who is a parent. And so, we've kind of put this report together, which I understand you guys received before the meeting started. So, I'll just kind of go through it a little bit and add a few comments. So, we have our membership list. As you know, John Farburg is retiring. And so, we will be requesting that someone else from the West Central Juvenile Center attend our LAC meetings. We feel it's a really important part of our meetings to get an update about the youth that they're serving over there. We've had some presentations at our meeting, including information on the Level 4 school program, the budgeting process and review of the 2018 budget with social services. And then, we also had Julie Sevett and Steve Larson come in and talk about the expansion and the jail and stuff. And so, as a result of that, the Early Childhood Initiative and the LAC will be working with Julie to put some possible resources in the visiting area of the new correctional facility, as well as some activities for youth to be doing while they're waiting for their visitation time. So, the ECI will be working on things for the younger kids and the LAC will be working on things for some of our older youths. Probably the richest part of our conversation every month at our LAC meeting is those updates from our LAC members. It always leads us off kind of into a tangent. And Commissioner Haney knows, we kind of have a really rich and long conversation about many of the needs that are out there. I've listed some of the projects that we have worked on in the past year, including the Who Do You Call, Who Do I Call brochure that I just distributed to you. We use this quite a bit. They put it in all of the child study classrooms or meeting rooms at all of our schools, as well as social services has it. We put it in the county building where they keep their brochures. And we also give it to our mental health providers so that they can send it out as well. It's our way as LAC to just kind of make sure that we are keeping current with what's available out there, as well as providing that information to the community as well. One of the things that we do, we put an article every month into our Kids Source that usually has to do with some mental health work. And that is provided at no cost by the more public schools. So, Kids Source is a document that comes out every month and it has quite a bit of information in it, so we are hoping. So, typically when we survey our parents every year, we do so by giving a survey that we've used for a number of years. And we provide that to our case managers and they give it to their families. And then, we try to do probably some parents at Head Start that maybe are not receiving that information. And we kind of basically get the same information back every time. So, this year, we thought we would change it up a little bit. And we actually had the survey as part of our Kids Fest event, which we incorporated some mental health information in as well. So, I've provided you with a summary of that. So, in looking at that survey, we just had a few short questions. And the kids were doing an activity with us while the parents were filling out the survey. And then, I drew two names out of all of the surveys that were completed for a Dairy Queen gift card. So, that was a little incentive because of course, the kids said, "Yes, Mom, fill it out." Come in here. I will pass this around. This is what was in the Kids Source for May for our Mental Health Awareness Month.
My name is Amanda Brandt from Pantry.
Great, welcome. So, the survey summary is in your packet. Fifty percent of the parents that completed that survey were not aware of the mental health services that we have in our county. So, we as a LAC really need to do some more work around that. We have 30% of the parents that were somewhat aware of those. We find that having our booth at Kids Source, we get a lot of information, a lot of questions about behavioral things, or who should I call, maybe some school issues that they're having. We also asked them for some barriers to accessing services, which I was kind of surprised because they really mirror what we've typically had every year in our survey, including the issue of that financial piece with either no health insurance or the large deductibles and co-pays that they need to pay before reaching their out-of-pocket part. Transportation came up, as well as the long waiting list. So, that tells me that we have had families that have tried to access some of our services and just haven't been able to do that. The pediatrician or that family doctor is typically that first line of where parents go when they need, or they have concerns about their child, or they need some help. Thirty percent of the parents that were completing the survey had questions or concerns about their child's behavior. And 45% of that group shared those concerns with the regular doctor. But over half of those parents weren't really happy with the response that they received from their doctor. And so, I think as a system overall, we really just need to be able to try to reach out to those health systems, suggest that they maybe get some more information, make sure that they have our brochures, and so that they know who else that can refer to that family.
Okay.
And then, 66% of the parents completing the survey were not aware that we have a mobile crisis response program here in Clay County. So, I did share that with the folks that run that program to let them know that too. And they were at Kids Fest and felt that they did a good job of interacting with those parents. As far as some of the needs that the providers in the LAC put down, I mean, I don't have to tell you that we are seeing some pretty complex families with some pretty high needs for kids. It seems like the kids that we're having in our system really have some severe mental illness that have become kind of a challenge. I think that causes some stress and some burnout among our staff as well, which is kind of concerning for that. Transportation, again, was talked about that. And as I mentioned last week, when I was here talking to you about the collaborative, Rhonda, we've brought that concern to Rhonda and she's put a group together. And we'll be meeting today at 1:00 to kind of look at some of those examples from the webinar and see if we can maybe do a pilot project or something and get it moving a little bit. We're very happy that Matt Busk did give us an evening shift at the Family Service Center. So, that has been very helpful for families who want to do like incredible years but don't have a ride, so they can take the bus there and back. But some of our CD treatment programs and some of those things that are over at our door are just a little bit harder for our families to get to, particularly in the evening. We have a waiting list right now for psychiatry that's about four to six months, which is too long when kids need help and medication.
If I can comment on that, that has been an issue with Lakeland for a long time. And we're trying to get creative in how we can recruit and there's just a shortage of psychiatrists. I know that transportation is an issue for a percentage of these people. Lakeland has been vocal about if they could get to Fergus, there's only like a two or a four day waiting list. So, if, you know, unfortunately, if, I know there's a transportation barrier for some people, but there is a small percentage of that could get to those shorter. So, just be aware that, one, Lakeland's being creative in that, but two, to take that extra step when you're trying to make an appointment to say, you know, "If I were to travel to those satellite locations, could I get in sooner?" And I know that I don't want Clay County citizens to have to go to Otter Tail County, but in a crisis situation, in the meantime, it's probably our best option.
That is great to know because many of our Clay County residents have to go to Fergus Foster Dental Work too.
Right.
So, sometimes we just have to go.
And I think Lakeland is trying to change how they, when they're doing those appointments. Yes, the first available appointment in Morehead probably is, you know, 30 days out unfortunately at this point. But if they were to say, "But if you would like to, you know, go to Fergus or DL, maybe we could get you in sooner."
Great. I think one of the problems, or I don't want to say problems, but in the past, our region has been designated by the state as one of those that have difficulty getting mental health professionals, particularly psychiatrists. And for whatever reason, they have taken us off that list. So, we're not a high need, so therefore, we're not getting the incentives that the state would give us to recruit.
Right. But I think the shortage is nationwide too.
It is.
You know, it just, the reality is in psychiatry, I think Lakeland has said, "You hire a psychiatrist, you're automatically going to lose 100 grand a year just because of the reality of what the financial logistics are." And so, that's hard for people to want to come to an area. But they're trying to be creative.
Yeah, yeah. Which I think leads to being all the more important that we partner with our other medical providers that can see families that maybe aren't just quite complex, leaving some of those openings for some of our really high needs kids. So, some of the other needs that we discussed at our LAC meeting included expanding the school-based mental health services. We're very happy that we now have those services in all of our schools in the county. I think that's huge. I think that's very, I know that there's a lot of counties that don't have it in even one school. So, that we were able to do that in partnership with the county and the collaborative is really great. We need to find a programming or something that we can do with some of those aggressive kids, and that's, I'm sure, not a surprise to you. They just don't always fit necessarily in some of the current programs that we have. And then, there is really a need for that therapeutic childcare. We are seeing very young children with very aggressive, complex needs already at the age of three and four that are being asked to leave a family provider or a center-based provider because of their behaviors. And so, in order to get them to be successful in school, we would like to see that therapeutic childcare center where they could work on some of those concerns that everyone has and then kind of transition them into the regular early childhood programs. And we also see a need for the drop-in childcare because we have a lot of families that don't have someone to leave their kids with. And so, we don't, and we do not have a child, drop-in childcare here in Morehead or in Clay County. So, that's really kind of a need. So, I mean, I can give you an example of that, that one of our members shared at one meeting about a family who the parent has to do her own kind of trauma and therapy work, but she also has young children and she has no transportation. So, she gets on the bus and she rides the bus over to Kids Kingdom, which is in South Fargo. And she drops the children off. And she has to ride the bus back to her home where her case manager picks her up. And then, she takes care of, you know, her mental health needs. And they drop her back off at home and she gets back on the bus and goes over and gets her kids and brings them back. And, you know, that takes up pretty much a part of the day. And if you're struggling with your own mental health or your child's having a really rough day, it becomes a challenge to get them on the bus and to be able to meet them at the childcare thing. So, but we also have successes. So, I know that we come to you and we talk a lot about needs. And I think it's important to think about those needs always as we kind of move forward. But I think we also need to celebrate the successes we have in Clay County because in my work, I have found that Clay County is the best at collaborating with others to really address some of those needs. And, you know, we can't address all of them. It's a, mental health is a complex system and we're always going to have needs. But I don't think that that's necessarily a reflection on what we're doing for families because I think we're doing the best we can with the funding that we have and the staff that we have here in the county. So, we were able to recruit, or the county was, of some additional respite providers, which was huge because we have a lot of families with case management that just need a little bit of respite, keeps them from being in out-of-home placement. So, that's a good component of it. This is the first year of Kid Fest that we've had some mental health providers there as well. And that, we've been going for about five years now. And it's a really large event in our community. So, we have a lot of, a lot of families and kids that are there. And then, our region is part of a pilot region for the System of Care Grant. The region board got together and kind of put together a proposal. And so, because of that, we're in line to be able to get some additional funding so that we could be a pilot project for a number of those programs. One of the other philosophies that comes with that System of Care Grant that we've talked about in a number of places is the no wrong door. So, you know, I think we can continue to kind of look at that and find where parents are calling for information or services and making sure that if they're not calling the place that, if they call the place that isn't, can't help them, that there's that warm hand off to the agency that can. Because oftentimes, it takes a lot for our parents to make one phone call about it, much less being told, "Nope, that's not going to work. You have to call this person and then this person and this person." So, it's another piece of just making everyone aware of what we have here in Clay County. She said she'd come as long as she didn't have to talk.
Well, thank you for your presence on the collaborative. I know it's really beneficial to have your perspective and insight. And while you may not want to speak here, I know you speak there, and so that is very important. So, thank you.
And as a parent of a child who we've struggled with since he was two and now 13, it's a road that we didn't think we'd be down, but you are as a parent. And I've learned a lot being on the committees and their finger.
Good. Thank you. This is very beneficial, so I appreciate that. You know, I think you guys can continue to brainstorm where best to place these. I even think, you know, if the area churches were to have it, you know, they see a lot of young people with their youth ministry programs. So, just to have this often, if a parent were to come in for guidance from their pastor to have that to kind of send them to the next place for help as well. Does anyone have any questions on this? No? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our number three item is the Adult Mental Health Advisory Council Report. Allison Wolbeck and Tricia Hopper. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
What are these again? Bill holders? Okay.
Are there enough?
Oh, you can put them on your keychain.
Yep. Do we need to do that now?
I can do it after.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My kids do that.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Allison Wolbeck.
And I'm Tricia Hopper.
We are pleased to deliver the 2018 report of the Clay County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. On behalf of the council, we wish to commend the county commission on their previous investments for mental health services and the improvement of mental health and well-being of those who reside in Clay County. We also thank you for your financial support of $1,500 for calendar year 2018. Your ongoing investment and personal support for providing effective mental services across Clay County has allowed many previously unmet needs to become met over the past years. This investment includes ongoing inquiry and problem solving around current issues facing adults living with mental illness across Clay County.
Mental health and well-being are important for all people, including individuals who do not have mental illness. The World Health Organization, WHO, defines mental health as "a state of well-being in which the individual realizes his or her own abilities, can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively and fruitfully, and is able to make a contribution to his or her community." While our 2018 report will primarily focus on addressing the needs of Clay County adults living with mental illness, we recognize that we must also focus attention on creating policies, systems, and environments that will promote mental health and well-being for all residents in order to prevent or mitigate the impact of mental health and support recovery.
Over the last several years, the need for additional providers offering adult rehabilitative mental health services has increased. To address this need, area providers have expanded their programs to include this service. Currently, providers are reporting a decrease in referrals. During our discussions, we have recognized that while a particular agency may have a waiting list for this service, it may be due to the choice of adults with a lived mental health experience to keep their mental health services with one provider. To those who work out in the community, or those who work out in the community have seen the need for more individuals to benefit from this service. It is our belief that through information provided by providers and adults with a lived mental health experience, that there are many people that do not know their service is available to them because they only receive psychiatric and psychological services.
So, with that in mind, our recommendations are, first, to support a collaborative effort with the Clay County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council, Clay County Social Services, and all area inpatient and outpatient mental health service providers to develop and implement a screening tool, which will identify additional service eligibility for individuals they serve. It's going to help educate those who are receiving services to the laundry list of services they may not know about. And then, for providers of armed services, we want them to not only inform their clients at the time they are placed on the waiting list of other providers of the service, but to also follow up quarterly with those folks that are still on the waiting list to see if they want to continue to be on a waiting list or be referred externally to other providers who may not have the list. Again, just so people aren't sitting on the waitlist for months and months and months, not knowing that they could start services elsewhere.
Sometimes we forget that we have another option. So, good to remind us.
Good stuff.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, questions for the co-chairs. If not, thank you for your presence and the dialogue that you bring to these meetings. And I know Allison, you've been instrumental in the conversation for our jail behavioral health unit. Thank you for your presence there. And I know you've also been presenting at AMC, I believe. So, thank you for doing those presentations as well.
We also have, on page five, we do present our membership list for county board approval.
Are there changes to this from last year?
Couple.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve the membership list.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Also, on behalf of the Children's Local Advisory Council and the Adult Local Advisory Council, we have the proclamation for you.
Yes, I do have the proclamation for Mental Health Month 2018. See if I can read. May is Mental Health Month, so the Clay County proclamation is, "Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas, prevention in an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas, identifying and intervening and addressing problems earlier improves children and youth's quality of life and their chance to succeed, and whereas, there is strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas, Clay County has made a commitment to community-based systems of mental health care for all residents and has appointed local health, local mental health advisory councils for adults and children, and whereas, each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month, and specifically, May 10th as Children's Mental Health Day in Clay County, Minnesota. As commissioners of Clay County, we call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Clay County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions." Adopted here the 8th of May 2018.
Let's so move the proclamation.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next item is A Place for Hope Recovery and Wellness Center, the annual report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
So, I'm not sure if you guys read through the annual report.
We did get it in our packets, so thank you.
Okay. So, I will try not to read off of it too much. So, as you know, mission, the mission for A Place for Hope is to provide a safe, enriching, and supportive environment for adults living with serious and persistent mental illness or serious mental illness. We try to build social relationships, promote peer mentoring, improve health outcomes, and provide educational opportunities for these individuals to lead successful lives. We will be celebrating our 20th year in July. We were established in 1998. Started out in basically someone's house, and eventually, they moved forward in moving to facilities. We are currently in our current environment. I attempted last year very hard to move us to a more central location. That did not pan out so well as far as the monetary aspect of that. So, we are still in our current lease agreement for another year. So, that is still one of our things looking forward that we would like to do, is get us a little more centrally located into Morehead, which I think would contribute also to our mission statement of, you know, getting us more connected to community relationships. We are still working on recruiting and adding new board members, which I think will promote more successful facilitation of how the environment works. We are working on expanding our programming to better reflect SAMPA's eight dimensions of wellness, and always trying to recruit new members and volunteers through community So, I think we've done a good job at building our board up. It's a lot more positive, a lot more structured.
Our member staff-
Our member stats continue to be high. We added eighteen new members last year. We've already added eleven this year thus far, so membership continues to stay fairly high on that level. We had over 5,000 member visits last year. And right now, we're currently at about 1,500 already for this year. And then our average unduplicated attendance, meaning that's not a person that continues to come every day or once a week or whatever, is ninety-two.
Okay.
So going forward, our big thing is that we need to continue to build funding sources, build board membership, that type of thing, which I think seems to be a constant issue for us. And then, like I said, as we get a stronger board, that'll improve too, because then board will be able to take over some of that assistance with fundraising and those types of things.
How often does your board meet?
They meet once a month.
Okay. Good work. Does anyone have any questions on the report? I just want to highlight one thing that you didn't say is that with the collaboration with the Great Plains Food Bank, you were able to distribute thirty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four pounds of food. That's a significant amount going to people in the community, so.
Yeah, we go once a week generally. Well, this today we didn't go because they have a conference down in Dill that the individuals wanted to go to, so the van was being utilized for that purpose today. But generally, we go on Tuesdays. You know, and again, it depends on what they have to distribute, is what we are able to redistribute. So we've even gotten dog and cat food, which has been very helpful to some folks with support animals, so.
Great work. Thank you. Any, do you need board action on your board of directors at all or not? Probably not. Good. We're not adding anyone extra. All right. Well, thank you, Ladonna. Anyone else? All right, keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're a little ahead of schedule. Commissioner Campbell, do you want to do your reports?
I certainly can. I did not have much last week. I did have a meeting with members of the city of Moorhead last week regarding our our work on the legislation for the salt, the transfer station. And we had a good meeting with them and clearly, it's a major priority for Clay County, as we talked about as a board last week, and it appears that we're well on our way to seeing that come forward. We got some good news this week that is in the current bill that's in the House, right? And the Senate has yet to act on it, but. And then Thursday, we had a special diversion authority meeting. It was actually called for by Senator Hoven, wanted to come before us, and he mentioned that he's going to be looking at thirty-five million dollars from the federal government this year. And then, you know, we talked a lot about, you know, there was a presentation to Plan B to both the Senator and to Governor Burgum was also there. And one of the, one of the key things that was in our packet too was a a letter from the Department of Natural Resources in Minnesota regarding Plan B, and I just want to highlight one portion of it. It was addressed to Michael Redlinger, who is one of our directors, temporary directors right now with the Flood Diversion Authority. And what the DNR states in terms of the project says environmental needs determination. It says, "After reviewing the proposed project reflected in your application, the DNR has determined that there are substantial revisions to the proposed project that was evaluated for the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitanary Flood Risk Project in 2016." So, you know, I think that statement right there recognizes the fact there are some people who today will still try to tell us that we have made no, no changes to the previous plan. And the DNR is referring to them as substantial changes, and I think that's important to recognize because there were some who believed that we have not, you know, and that goes back to the work of the task force that was done. So, but that process is done, and as a result, a result of those significant changes, the DNR has told us that they will have to do a supplemental environmental impact statement. And we're probably looking at that being completed sometime. I think their goal right now is to have it completed by November 1st, which at that point in time, we will find out basically if that's a permissible project or not. And if there's any other changes that would have to be done to it, so. So that is, that was, it's all, overall, I think good news going on in that direction. Yep, very good. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Heaney?
Thank you. On Wednesday, May 2nd, I attended the meeting of the Moorhead Planning Commission, and we had a couple of public hearings about changing some different property designations from residential low-density class three to mixed-use corridor. And then we also had a discussion of a conscientious use amendment from low-density residential to mixed-use. And then there was a, an apartment building that's going to go up on Eighth Street down about across from the Concordia Football Stadium, and there was some neighbors there that expressed concerns about a four-story building going up right in there. But then they were all advised of this well in advance and had discussed with the developer. The developer had gone around and reached out to them and done it in what would be recognized as the right way to do it. And the neighbors were all, while they voiced their concerns, they were all on board with the moves that the developer had made to allay their concerns, such as covering the dumpsters and things like that. And so that was a very positive. And then on Thursday, I attended the Joint Powers Committee, and we heard a presentation from Chris Volkers, the Moorhead City Manager, about the update on the southeast Main Avenue, twenty, Twenty-first Street Railroad grade separation project. And then we also received information about the Joint Powers Evaluation Summary from last year's by Superintendent Brandon Lunak for the Independent School District Number 152. And that was it. We adjourned for the summer. We won't have a meeting now till fall. Then I attended the Children's Mental Health Luncheon that same day. And then later in the afternoon, then I attended the Clay County Collaborative Governance Board, and we we looked at the budget for 2019, or 2018, the budget for the rest of fiscal year 2018. And we got reports from Carolyn Sternid and from Jane Newbauer. And we had a recommended change in the bylaws, and we looked at reviewing of the fiscal year 19 budget. And that was it.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Yesterday, we had a meeting for Minnesota rural counties. We spent the first half hour trying to figure out how they're on an IPD meeting. Lot of echo energy and stuff like that, so it took us a while to get going, but. There's bumper, same thing, still bumper discussions. We talked about the end bridge evaluations. That decision is supposed to come in mid-May, which is going to affect around thirteen counties in the northwestern part of the state, and so that will be a big deal as far as, you know, what, how they're going to evaluate a pipeline, so that could make a big thing on their taxes. Discuss broadband and also acquisitions. Again, they're talking about land acquisitions by DNR and some of the other government agencies. What procedure to do, you know, there's still, I guess right now, they're just, we're looking on proper notifications of townships and counties of when that's going to happen. Last night, I went to Georgetown for their city council meeting, and they had a lot of discussion on, with FEMA. FEMA came out with a, this, for every household homes in Georgetown, what they have to do to become qualified for, whether you have to have flood insurance and stuff like that, what they have to do. And there's a lot of the manufactured homes, you know, they have to put in vents underneath and stuff like that, and they can't have basements in Georgetown unless they build up their house that it's pretty much looks like on a pedestal or something like that, you know, so. There's a lot of restrictions FEMA's putting on Georgetown, and I, I talked to them that you'd said they were looking at raising Highway 75 in that diversion project, and that would help them out quite a bit as being, having a certified dyke up there, you know, so.
Then you'll have to just help us push that project forward.
Yeah. That would really help. I mean, they, most of them up there, they're within a foot or half a foot of being qualified. I mean, the the level is eight hundred and eighty-four feet, you know, some of the houses are eight eighty-three, eight eighty-two, and they have to go through quite a bit of work, just, not quite a bit of work, but they have to put these vents in and do all this stuff to get qualified. Those are my two meetings.
All right, Commissioner Miller?
Frank covered, I was also at MRC, and Frank covered that pretty well, and I was at the meeting with the city officials regarding our bonding money, and I thought that was a great meeting. We had a lot of discussion and I think we got a lot of things resolved, so. Let's see. I had, we had a meeting yesterday of the planning committee for the ribbon cutting and opening of the law enforcement center and the correctional facility and the sheriff's office and the jail staff and the Moore Police Department, and Brian and have all been working on that, doing a great job, and I think we're at the point now where we might as well just invite everybody in North Dakota and Minnesota to the event, so we'll have it covered, so. Could be good, so. Yeah, let's see. I think that was it for me.
All right, thank you. Last week, I attended a meeting with Jennifer and I Pearson and Brian Berg about our item number 11, so I'll cover kind of the highlights of that when we talk about that, and I also attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting last week. A job offer has been made to an individual for the executive director there contingent on the pre-employment screening issues, so that's been a lengthy search, so hopefully that can be resolved shortly. We did have a fairly extensive conversation. I had commented earlier that we were having trouble being reimbursed from the North Dakota DOT for some, some issues dating back to even December, and so that was presenting a cash flow issue. We seem to identify part of the problem had to do with some accounting issues. We are in the process of reaching out to different accounting firms to complete that for us, and hopefully that will remedy any issues that have come up because of that. But that concludes the report on that. Dave, are you ready? Okay. Well, can we move to item number six, Brian?
Certainly.
Okay. Item number six is to the reappointment of our county engineer, David Overbaugh. Brian?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the commission. Yeah, this is, this is a tough one. This took a lot of, lot of thought process in deciding this. I shouldn't make fun of it, but, but what you have before you is the reappointment of your county engineer, Dave Overbaugh. And according to state statute, you are required to reappoint your, or appoint a county engineer every four years, and your current one, Dave Overbaugh, is up for reappointment. He has been appointed in 2006, 2010, 2014, and now your consideration is for 2018. And I know I've talked to a few of you about him, and there was just no hesitation, and frankly, my recommendation in my email is that Dave is a very dedicated, committed county engineer to Clay County and has an excellent working relationship with the townships. As you are well aware, we do twenty-six out of the thirty township roads as well, and he meets with them on a regular basis. He's just really Johnny on the spot to try to answer and solve any problems, and and sometimes we harass Dave a little bit, but it is amazing to me when he sits here and you say, yeah, well, you know, there's, there's those, that rough spot up on Highway 95, and he say, yeah, it's right behind the turn by those trees, and we were up there the other day and looked at it, and he can just about tell you every spot on the roads in Clay County. And I think that's very, very impressive and shows a real concern, so I have no hesitation in recommending him for reappointment, so certainly open it up for any questions or comments.
Discussion from the board?
No, I guess I fully agree, because I mean, every time I've talked to Dave, I've had a concern, and I mean, in fact, last week, Dave and I went over all, quite a few of the rural roads up there in Hagan Township, Keene Township, and I appreciate you going out there and checking things out there, Dave, and I agree with your assessment of him, and I do recommend, I make a motion to reappoint him.
A motion to approve and a second. Further discussion?
Well, I think Dave, with Brian on his way out, the comments, you mean, that's pretty good. He's usually meaner than that. Now, you do a great job. We appreciate it, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I want to echo the comments, and I know, Dave, I've worked with you on the Highway Tracking Committee since you've been engineer. And, you know, you've, you've been very fair in your analysis of our county roads, and you've spoken up with your expertise in, in how we should deal with the five-year plans. You've kind of kept politics out of it, and you've told us what you think is most important for Clay County, and I appreciate that, and I will support anybody who takes that approach, so. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I echo that. I, I was one of those that I called you last week about a ravine and a slumping, and you pulled up on Google Maps and knew exactly what I was talking about, so I appreciate your commitment to addressing items. I sometimes feel that maybe the highway department doesn't get a fair analysis, because I've always said if we don't know about an issue, it's hard for us to advocate about something, and so you've always been more than willing to look at something once you hear about it, and I really appreciate the work that you do, so thank you. Well, we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're still waiting on.
You can do the maximum price, can't you?
Brian, can we do a number eight?
The guaranteed maximum price.
Oh, you certainly can. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and again, good morning to all of you. What you have in this document is a guaranteed maximum price amendment for construction engineers to include, you've already acted on the guaranteed maximum price for the juvenile center expansion, but now he went back and prepared the contract to include that. So if you look on the front page of the document that was included in your packet, and I'll just kind of run over to, because I think it's kind of important, no, it's very important, but if you look down in article, on the first page, under Article 8.1 and the second paragraph, which is 8.1.1.1, on the fourth line, you will see a figure of twenty-nine million eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. That was the guaranteed maximum price for the correctional facility. Then the line right under that, you will see a line of thirteen million one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. That was the guaranteed maximum price for the law enforcement center. And then if you go two lines below that and over to the right slightly, you'll see a figure of five hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's the only change order that has added dollars to this project, and that was not, and I hate to even call it a change order, because it was something we knew that we had to change, or to add, and we weren't ready to commit to the heating the heating system in that. And then we studied that, and studied that, and studied that, and we felt came up with the best resolution. So, that was your change order, and that was included in the $29,828, not included, I'm sorry, that was in addition to the 29. And then you added the juvenile center, you approved the guaranteed maximum price, and that was the $8,876,281, for a grand total of this contract that is continuing with construction engineers of $52,292,683.51. So, that's what this document is all about, it's adding that. But I, I kind of just wanted to go through it and, and, and show you what all the figures were. You have not added anything to these projects except for that heating, and that's what we expected even before we went into it. So, I ask for approval.
Okay. I just have a comment. So, I noticed that West Central Regional Juvenile Center is WCRJC in most of the document, except at the beginning where it says for Clay County Jail, LEC Building, and WRJC. It's, it's minor, but in terms of identifying, I just want to make sure that's correct.
Um, I didn't see that. What page?
Well, on, right up to the very top.
Oh, that was WRJC, I see.
And then there's one or two other places where the C wasn't there, and so I, for consistency, we want to make sure that's not.
Okay. Move through and make that consistent.
Okay.
If you could approve this, and then you can sign it when it gets changed.
I'll move to approve the amendment.
We have a motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Eric is here, so if we'll move back to the highway number, or then item number five, the highway department items, approval of the highway's yearly supply bids and opening of bids for the HSIP intersection. Good morning.
Good morning. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the yearly supply bids. Eric's got a packet that he'll hand out for everybody. This is the, the bids that we do every year. Eric, did we open those up over here? Is that correct?
Yep, on Thursday.
So, last Thursday, we, like we have been doing in the past, we opened the bids up over here at the boardroom. We take those back to our office, we cavulate those. With the exception of the gravel bids, all the other bids are basically a list of different vendors that we can utilize for culverts, for bituminous mixture, or rental of construction equipment. So, I guess I would recommend that we approve the, the bids from True North Steel and Contect for the corrugated metal culverts. And I would recommend we approve the abstract for the, looks like four different contracting vendors for bituminous asphalt. They've got Border States, Central Specialties, Northern Improvement, and FM Asphalt. And then depending on what they've got going on, how busy they are, what part of the county we in is, is how we determine which one of the vendors we use. For the most part, we always try to use the cheapest one, obviously, but if they're running a lot of mix and we can't get in, then we have flexibility to use one of the other plants in the area. And then we've got a pretty big listing of construction equipment. It's on the second to last page there. There is Tim, Tim Crompton, Fitzgerald Construction, Turner Sand and Gravel, and Saleem Brothers. And we've got a whole slew of different equipment if they need to rent a piece, we have options there.
Okay. Well, we'll move through this one by one. So, we have the corrugated metal culvert that you're requesting approval contingent on the review from True North.
Correct. Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving into the furnishing of the bituminous mixture.
Move approval of the four.
We have a motion to approve the four.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Contingent on the review again.
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Rental of the construction equipment.
Can I ask a question before we?
Yep, that's fine.
David, it seems to me in the past that we, for rental equipment, we had a bigger list than this.
I agree. I think there was.
Why would we, did we, did we reach out to those others, and do they know, do they have interest in it?
We didn't do anything any different, I guess. I'm not sure why the list got a little bit smaller. What we do run into in the future, you know, the next couple of months as we do work, we will get equipment lists and prices from other contractors, is what we have typically done, and we do add that list to this list as well. So, that's something that we've seen in the past.
So, your recommendation is to accept all of the bids on this one?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving into the furnishing of the crushing and hauling of gravel. You have the companies with red were the lower bids on that.
Yeah.
So, what you're asking for is to accept the bids from Turner Sand and Gravel for township numbers one through eight, 10 through 21, 24 through 29. Okay? And Strata Corporation for township numbers nine and 30, and Fitzgerald Construction for township numbers 22 and 23. Correct?
Yep.
All right. My, my question is, I think I've asked every year, but are we testing to make sure the gravel is consistent with the different companies? I know that we've talked a little bit about some maybe having a little too much binder in there.
Do you want to get into the testing a little bit on that?
Yeah, so in our spec, we do require testing. I think it's every 2,000 cubic yards. And we do have a gradation which has a window for each, you know, size particle. So, there is, they can meet the spec and still vary a little bit. But I guess to answer the question, yeah, we do test.
Well, and the reason I ask is that's a common question that I'm getting from some township supervisors, and so I think it's important just to reiterate that we are, we are testing that.
Yeah, so we have production tests before they haul it. So, we check their pile, and then as they haul it on the road, too. Then we take samples as they do along the, every so many yards, and we take another bag and test it.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, the next is your opening of bids for the HSIP intersection lighting project.
Yeah, this is a cooperative project that Eric has been kind of taken the lead for Becker, Wilka, and Menominee and Clay Counties. I think we've got two bidders?
Uh, just one bid today.
Okay, we've got just one bid here today from?
Otter Electric.
Otter Electric.
Conferius Falls.
We should say that your estimate on this is $567,690.
Correct?
Uh, yep, do you have?
Yep, it's on.
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, yeah. And then we do have bid bond precedent and the amount of 5%.
Okay.
Did they have one denim, is that right, for this one?
Yep, we do have one denim, and it is acknowledged on here. And the grand total is $364,418. That's $364,418.
One of the board's wishes.
I'd, I'd move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Dave, how many, Eric, David, how many, how many intersections in Clay County are?
Maybe it's eight intersections.
I was thinking eight.
Yeah.
That's really good.
And then Eric had talked with MnDOT, and there's, there's some stipulations with the award today from the board. And there is three contingencies that they would, can like to be added on there. Should have mentioned this ahead of time, but contingencies on no, no errors in the bid, which we always have, contingent on MnDOT approval of the Cooperative Construction Agreement that I brought before the board about a week ago between Clay County and MnDOT, and then also contingent upon MnDOT's Office of Civil Rights certifying the DBE participation.
Okay.
I would make that part of my.
Did you make it or did Grant?
I made the motion.
Yeah, he made it.
Okay. So, Commissioner Campbell makes that part of the motion. Who gets the second?
Jim.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are to that point. We'll take a 10-minute break. Item number nine is our next item, the amendment to the Sanford Clinic North Medical Consultant Agreement. Good morning.
Kathy McKay is not able to be here.
That's all right.
Jamie Hill, yes.
Welcome.
Okay, so we have the Sanford Clinic Medical Consultant Agreement.
Good.
Finally.
Yes. Well, I, I do want to speak on behalf of that. Just thanks for the flexibility in that. I know that that was, that came up before us, and we needed action really quickly, and didn't want to put you in a bind, but also wanted to make sure that we had, had a chance to kind of button that down. So, thank you for that. So, what this will go through is January 30th of 2019.
Correct. And there wasn't a change in the rate. That's kind of what we discussed in March.
Yep, yep. And Jenny, have you had a chance to look at this?
I did. I reviewed it when Kathy received it.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10 is a request to fill the vacancy in the recorder's office. Bryan Berg and Kim Savage. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, again.
Yes.
And Commissioners. We're here today to ask to fill the vacancy that has been created in the recorder's office with the vacancy of Diane Strifel retiring the recorder. And we have met as a committee on this. We have not brought it to the PIC committee because we're not really asking for a change at this time. In discussing with the personnel in the office and Kimberly's guidance, we have chose to request of you to fill the vacant position, not the recorder's position yet. Diane is still the recorder until I think it's June 3rd, or 8th, okay, 8th. So, we've met on the, on the land management committee has met. We've talked about options. It just, I'm just not totally comfortable bringing that forward yet until we have more discussion to the PIC committee as to any changes there. The recorder's office runs really, really well. We have very, we have no complaints. In fact, I, I get input every once in a while, and particularly from Donna that sits outside of the recorder's office, how great and wonderful these ladies do treat the customers that come to the window. And, and I'm just, I know we want, we were looking at making a slight change there, and, and it's just tough to move forward when things are working so well with a different direction. So, I'm just really struggling with that. At a committee, we had quite a bit of discussion. So, in, in visiting with Kimberly and her staff, they are really concerned with only having three in the office. They run, that shop runs open from eight o'clock every day to 4:30 through the noon hours, and, and with vacations and stuff, it, it's just tough to do the job. Their vital statistics at the window is, is pretty heavily logged, and, so they need that fourth person. So, what we'd like to do is ask permission to fill that vacancy, and then we will work through the recorder. It's not replacing the recorder at this time. It's filling the vacancy in the office, and then we'll, we'll bring more information later on on this. So, it's not expanding. I know you asked for a budget sheet on the personnel changes, but I didn't bring one in because I think it was just more confusing, because the person that left was a recorder, certainly the higher step. And what we want you to do is to hire at the end training level, or that's what we're asking permission to do. So, Kimberly was nice enough to come along with me. She's the deputy, Chief Deputy Recorder. And any questions that you have about services and anything, I know she can handle that really well.
I'll just say that, you know, Brian and I have had conversation about this, so he's kind of kept me aware. And I, I appreciate this approach to filling the vacancy. I think you do have so much going through that office, it is, would be difficult to be a person down right now. And, and I think for us to take a little more time to make sure that we evaluate what the needs would be going forward after Diane's retirement, I think is, is most appropriate. I'd rather kind of take a conservative approach to that. So, Kevin, do you have a comment?
I do. The, I know we're, there's been discussion about potentially different arrangements to it, but like the assessor's position, there, there are requirements by the state for that position. And I'm wondering, do we have internally right now, are there, are there those such requirements from the recorder's position? And if so, do we have somebody internally that has those or that could soon meet those requirements?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, no, there are no statutory requirements on that. And that was one of the arguments that we made when we asked the state legislature to allow us to make that an appointed position, because there aren't statutory requirements like the assessors that are required to be SAMA within a certain amount. But it is a real specialized field, so your observation is.
Well, I, I know, I, I know that, and I guess I, I, you know, I, I will certainly support the request with the idea in mind that, that we're going to be able to fill Diane's shoes internally with somebody that's there, I guess, you know. And with that in mind, you know, if we were looking outside of that, then we would actually be adding personnel.
Yep.
And I don't think that is even, Kimberly, that's even your intent right now, if I'm reading everything right here, then.
You are. You're reading, you're reading things correctly, and that there's just that, there's been discussion about, like you said, can the assessor be the recorder? Yes. Can the recorder be the assessor? No, because of the requirements. And, and we've looked at the, that atmosphere down there, and, and it is just, I'm just struggling of even recommending anything even to the PIC committee, because things do work very well. We have really skilled people in there, so steady as she goes, I guess.
I think, I think, you know, just to, from my, my kind, my, what I've seen, what we've done with the second floor there, we've really already come a long way in making it more user-friendly for our citizens by having you all, and it, and it's very easy to, to then send directions within the same floor, not having to come upstairs or go down in the basement or what have you. So, I, I think I, I can see where your struggles are going to be on this, and, and I'm looking forward to those conversations in PIC. But I, I, I do think, in the meantime, and I'm sure I, I, you know, if it's okay, I would move that we authorize the filling of this vacancy.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Just a comment. I think this is what we will be facing in several departments in terms of transition over the next year, I think. And so, I think the conversations, like I said earlier, to have a conservative approach to how we evaluate what staff is needed, where, and where we could potentially save money, or wherever I think is appropriate. So, I also support the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
All right, our next item is item number 11, the request to fill the upcoming vacancy for our county administrator position. We have Jennifer, as well as Bryan here, wants to, Jennifer, you have in the song.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is kind of an interesting one for me to bring forward. And Jennifer and I have been meeting on this, and as you stated earlier, Madam Chair, we met with you. we met with you because we need some input certainly from the board and what is your request as to go forward. So, we, um, we've had pretty extensive discussion on this and I think the first question that has to be asked is what does the board want to do in, in moving forward? And we talked about options and I'll just say we, we've talked about three options and, and, and one is, uh, Commissioner Wayland brought it up a couple of week, a week ago or so, was, you know, do we just keep this as an internal, um, search? The other option, do we keep it as an external and internal search? So, we advertise both internally and externally? Um, third option, uh, as many, I'll say corporates do or even county governments do, city counties and stuff, governments do, they, they use a, a service, a headhunter service to go out and look for, for, that costs money. So, what we, uh, we, we looked at what you did last time and you really did an outstanding job last time.
Yeah, we don't want to make, the process was really good. We don't want to make the same mistakes again.
We did.
We learn from our.
I could all of a sudden face.
No, I think, um, you know, you, those three scenarios are, are what you talked about or we talked about. And I, you know, from my perspective, I've done several executive director searches in the last, uh, couple of years and, and I think we, uh, one, Clay County has a, a pretty excellent pool of internal candidates, but two, uh, because of our geographical location, I think to, to get a set pool to evaluate, um, to bring, um, you know, four or five good candidates to this board to interview, I think to, to, uh, have a, a shorter advertisement period with an internal and external would be our best, best bet. Um, if we were to get no, uh, you know, a shorter pool of applicants or, you know, we do have the ability to advertise more, spend more money on advertising or, you know, worst-case scenario possibly to hire a headhunter, but I'm not, not foreseeing that that would be the need at all. And so, our, our kind of thought process was, would be to, um, do an internal and external, uh, application. And Jennifer did pull what we did before, so we, we have that for you, but, um, I think.
So, if, Madam Chair, if that's what the board's wishes are, then I guess it's really kind of contained in the memo that.
Yep.
That, uh, then the, if we go through the process that we followed last time, um, we would, uh, advertise and Jennifer's got some things put together. She's, the, the committee even had a layout of who would be on what. And would you like her just to read through that process?
Yeah, if you want to run through, I had, um, Jennifer come up with a timeline for what this would look like. Uh, we, last time there was a selection committee that would, um, go through the applications and kind of score them based on, um, a question and, and resume period. And then that would be recommended to us based on a point system to those we would interview. And that would be full board, but the screening committee, um, last time was consistent of the board chair, the vice chair, the county administrator, county auditor, treasurer, HR coordinator and, and, one, a former Clay County Commissioner, who we've, uh, reached out to Jerry Waller. Jerry would be happy to serve in that capacity. And then a citizen at large, I reached out to Jim Joy, the mayor of Holly, who would be happy to serve in that capacity as well. But looking at our, because of, of Brian's timeline, um, it would be, uh, it, I mean, it's, it's coming up on, on time. I still feel like we have a quality amount of time to do a good, um, s- application period and, and interviews and search. So, there would be, um, a little bit of a overlap with Brian. Brian will be on, uh, vacation after July, but, um, should anything come up, um, you know, that person could call Brian night or day with any questions. I'm just kidding.
So, we're not looking at any overlap at all as far as?
There, uh, no, there is, um, I think a week or two overlap.
Well, what we could do, Madam Chair, on this, and Jennifer and I talked about this just a little bit yesterday, but you will have selected this person by that time. If it's an internal candidate, we can spend quite a bit of time together.
Right.
If it's an external candidate, uh, we can communicate and, and probably have a couple of different visitations and sitting down together. I can go to there or, or whatever the case may be.
Yep.
And, um, we can certainly look at that, so.
But the quality of individual in, in this level, I mean, I don't think really requires that much overlap. I think that, um, you know, granted, you have to come up to speed, but there are some issues, uh, but. I know it's a lot to digest on this, but I have had conversation with our vice chair about, about what this were to look like. So, I, I guess there's a couple of things. One, we need to get, um, this board's consensus if, if the advertising for internal and external candidates is something you want to do, uh, or if you wanted to hire a headhunter or whatever. We kind of need your feedback on that.
Well, I can give you my feedback on a headhunter and it's no.
Okay, good.
That's my feedback on it.
Okay.
I agree.
Uh, I, I do, um, I, I think we have strong internal candidates, but, uh, I do agree that it, you know, through a screening process to open it up to the outside, because I've it, I've actually had contact from the outside, wondering what is going to be the process. So, apparently there's going to be some interest. I just, uh, I, I'm just concerned about this timeline and maybe Jennifer, can you explain, uh, explain to us why, um, why it is what it is and?
Um, Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, this timeline, uh, we've played with a new number of times. This is one option we have. This does not allow an official overlap with Brian, um, but it can be tweaked. Um, I did do an option number two, which would allow about a week with him officially. Um, one item that we could change in here is the process that we had last time was that we did have a screening committee, which is the members noted here in red. Uh, they did, the HR director screened the applications prior to sending them out, just to make sure they met the qualifications and, um, gave them a score. And according to that, uh, the packets were then given to, uh, the screening committee and then they rated them based on a ten-question qualification questionnaire document that is to be submitted with the application. So, if you're okay with that, that would continue to be the process. Um, I did have a separate timeline for, uh, Brian did want it to be open until filled with a screening date set, uh, so we would post it. We would try to get everything posted online by tomorrow. We set the first screening date for the twenty-third. That leaves fourteen days. We will still accept applications past that date, uh, but that would be where we would encourage people to get their applications in by that date. So, then after that, I had a separate timeline where the screening committee could take a week to go through the applications and do their scoring based on the application itself and the qualification questionnaires. Um, that does push us out a week in regard to the interviews. Um, if we have the screening committee, uh, meet to discuss their scores and then contact the candidates, it only kind of gives us a week of a buffer to set up the interviews. However, we could also have myself pass along the applications as they come in, um, the screening committee and could then do them at the same time. And that would save us a week, push it up a week and give us an official overlap.
Right, and we wanted to present this being should everything, um, should someone give a full two weeks? Should we need a campus tour? All these extra things, uh, what that date would be. Uh, and because the Fourth of July in there was in there, that kind of changed some of the date piece as well, but, um, like I said, there is some wiggle where, wiggle room.
Some people may not need to give.
I, I would, I would certainly, um, encourage us to, uh, take the most expeditious route possible. And I say this because, uh, you know, starting in July, um, you know, we start getting in heavily into our budget process. And our county administrator plays a great big role in our, in our budget process. And, um, you know, I, and so we have Brian working on it in July as, and he does a great job with it, but then come, come August, that's going to be rolled over to somebody new. And, um, how, you know, if it's somebody internally, they're going to maybe have a better idea, but somebody externally may not. I, I don't have a problem with the screening commission, committee and the process you're talking about, but I would, I would certainly hope that we can, um, just expedite that, um, board approval time period.
Commissioner Campbell, that, this also does integrate the full four-week notice. Um, so if somebody doesn't need to give a four-week notice, that would of course bring it up as well, a couple of weeks. Um, I just was not sure at this level if that person would give, um, that long of a notice. So, there are places in here where we can tighten it up a bit as well.
Just a, just a reminder, when our previous board, when we, when we went through the process and, and found this gentleman, we, uh.
Gentleman.
We, we did, we did, uh, you know, we did have a, a quite, we actually had close to a six-month and that turned out to be more than necessary, no, no question about it. But, um, boy, I tell you what, uh, it's a pretty big role to have somebody walk into with no, uh, help right on the spot. Regardless who it is, I think that's, well, that's, that's, I've said my piece, I guess.
Just a response to that, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, you're not going to select that person if they don't have the knowledge of county government.
No, I mean.
And, uh, so, you know, they're going to have a lot of information and, and talent at whole.
So, uh, I think it's a general consensus, if I'm reading body language, that, uh, you're okay with the internal, external posting with a, um, recommended closed day, or not closed date, but, um, first screening on, uh, May twenty-third, uh, with keeping it open until filled. Correct?
And, Madam Chair, the wordage that they will post in the, in the announcement is the fact that, uh, and we reserve the right not to consider any more.
Passed.
So, person can't say, well, you said it's open till filled. No, we said we reserve the right to consider.
Well, if I really wanted a job and I saw there was a soft close on May twenty-third, I would guarantee it would be in before the twenty-third.
Yep.
Some of these dates can, it can be flexible on those, I presume, because I already have some conflicts on the twenty-third.
Yep.
I have prior dates on them.
Well, the twenty-third is just them getting it to HR. HR will then do the initial screening to make sure anything covers.
And I will do the initial screening as they come in. So, by the end of the twenty-third, I should have the information ready to pass along to the selection committee, unless we feel that the selection committee would like to receive the apps as they come in. We also have the SharePoint portal where they would have access to see those as we upload them.
You know, I think that would probably been, be beneficial to get them as they come in in terms of, um, I, you know, the application process is slightly lengthy, so I'm fine with, with that being an available option to the committee.
And, Madam Chair, just so the board understands, the, the selection committee narrows the field to five.
Yep.
You know, and then the full board will interview those five candidates. Uh, so, but you will have full influence over the finalists.
One, one point, I'd, I'd like to make, um, the screening committee members, um, have it, uh, on a committee assignment for both Commissioner Wayland and I, but, uh, also for those coming in from the at-large to make it a, a per diem and mileage reimbursement meeting for them.
That'd be good. Yeah, we, we need a motion on that.
Yeah.
Heads are nodding.
And we need a formal motion for that.
Okay. Make a motion. I make a motion.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to approve that.
Set.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And for clarity, that's a fifty-dollar per diem with, with mileage.
Yep.
That's what you kind of set.
Yep. An alignment with solid waste and planning. Okay. And any further discussion? Are you comfortable with how this process will move forward? We wanted to make sure that the full board had all the opportunity to do the full interviews.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I have is that open, open until filled, you know, and I realize people should put in their application before. You know, but if you get two applications after you're ready to review them, you guys say, well, this one will accept, this one won't accept, or we accept them all, or is there a?
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, I, I guess the only reason why I kind of hang on to that is that sometimes, and you just went through that with, I think, MetroCog or even at Lakeland where you go down, you, you're having, you're struggling with the, the candidates that you have and then all of a sudden Frank Gross puts in at the last minute. And the, the resume is just wonderful and the background is wonderful and you've eliminated because of a day or two, you've eliminated that person.
Or, or if there's a change in circumstance. With, with one, what we had is someone, uh, whose spouse thought they were, uh, they had initially applied, they thought their spouse was going to be relocated, uh, for their job, so they had withdrawn. On the point scheme for HR, they scored number one. Uh, so they were our top candidate. They had withdrawn and then the day after the close, um, the spouse's, uh, situation had changed and now they could apply. And so, because we had it open and filled, until filled, we were able to still interview that, that candidate. I think it gives you a flexibility.
Yeah, but, but that's just a, a thought.
If it's, you're not comfortable with it.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I am, I am fine with what's here. I, I, I just want to have access to, um, what the notice is and what it says and what the qualifications are.
We have, I did ask.
Yeah, but I, but I guess I, I, I want to have that because, like I said, I've already had some inquiries as to this position and I, I want to be able to tell them what the process is.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if, if this is something that we're going to do then too, if we can just have this sent to us electronically, then if we ever, if I have a request, for example, I can forward.
So, the posting will go live hopefully tomorrow.
Correct.
Correct? Uh, we'll get on that as soon as this meeting's done, but, uh, then we will have that link to where we can share it through our, uh, you know, inner communication circles, uh, AMC and your, um, Association of County Administrators, as well as a few other places will have this as well to distribute broadly. So, we're hoping we can get a, a good candidate pool.
And, Madam Chair, the process for the Commissioners too, to know that along with their application begins the screening process because there's ten questions that are sent out and, uh, we want responses to those questions and that's what the screening committee will review and along with their application. So, it isn't just fill out an application that takes you fifteen minutes and then submit it. If that's all the energy you put into it, it's not going to go very far.
Right.
So, you, you've got to do some, um, research and, and writing in order to, just like you did last time.
So, before the screening committee gets the applications from you, would you screen them to see that they meet the minimum requirements?
Correct. Commissioner Wayland, I will not pass along any applications that haven't met the minimum criteria. Um, the only ones that will go to the screening committee will have met the minimum criteria. There will be a separate ranking from what I initially screened them on. We will include that in the final score, um, and the selection committee will then take those applications and rate them based on the qualifications questionnaire that they have also submitted.
Comfortable with the process? All right. Seeing, uh, no further discussion, uh, we'll go forward with the recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you'll send this out to us.
Correct. All right, so we have had a chance to go through all of our committee reports, so Brian, if you have your update?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the, um, first one, I can talk a little, well, maybe I'll, I'll talk about that. Commissioner Wayland talked about the committee that, uh, we met yesterday in regards to formulating a plan to, um, for the ribbon-cutting ceremony that is to take place July twenty-fourth at ten o'clock. So, yeah, if you wanted to make note of that, so, um, there's going to be quite a bit of planning that goes into that because, uh, just the overall feeling, um, of the committee, I would say, um, is that this is a pretty important event. This is, uh, this is a huge investment in the community and a long-term investment on campus here and things. So, um, one suggestion that we would like to get your confirmation on with consensus vote or whatever is the, is the, um, main speaker and we would like to extend an invitation to the governor. Uh, we feel this correctional facility and the, the mental health, uh, approach that this has taken would garnish a real interest by him and, and we feel we'd have a good chance of him coming out and addressing this because I think one of his top, uh, issues is, um, behavior.
out and addressing this, because I think one of his top issues is behavioral health, mental health, and we feel that Clay County has really taken an extraordinary step to go in that direction. So what, if that is permissible?
Right. I believe it's, we were able to do an online request. That needs to happen sooner rather than later, just in terms of date planning, so, you know, I'd like to get your consensus to send a application on, I would sign that.
Yeah, we need to do that, and you needed that with the Commissioner Corrections too, the same process, or is it different for?
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioner Wayland, in that, in that online request, it says if the governor's not available, would you like, the commissioner, and that's what we talked about yesterday at the committee, which commissioners would we want it? We said commissioner of public safety or of corrections, so that we would, I'm sure we'll get one of the three, so.
The rest of you okay with that?
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Okay.
All right, good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, tomorrow afternoon or in the morning, we're going to have that resilience training for employees, staff officers. You're certainly willing to attend that? And then in the afternoon is when we plan to go into a two-hour session on planning. And I'm not using the word strategic planning and all of those things, just planning, where's, what's the future of Clay County? Where do you guys want us to go? And how can, what is expected out of the department heads, and how do we go forward on that? So if you, we're planning for lunch, because we're coming from the training in the morning and going into that, so we'd certainly invite you to join us for lunch and then go into that afternoon training session. So if you want to let us know, that's fine. If you want to show up, that's fine too, you're the bosses.
Where are you located?
Oh, at the MR, MCRI.
CCRI.
Yeah, MCRI.
CCRI.
Oh.
CCRI.
Well, it's not here. It is the.
You're confusing MRCC.
CCRI, yes. 2903, there's too many acronyms. CCRI.
And what time is that?
That would be at 1:00. Lunch is 12:00. Yep.
Oh, wait, they were wondering, the resilience training, I think that's what he just asked. The resilience training time?
He just asked the resilience training?
Time?
That's at 10, at 9:00. 9:00 that starts. It's 9:00 to 10:00, and then with a 15-minute break, and then basically.
I plan to be there noon and noon.
Okay? Very good. Okay, the next item, it's already been talked about. We met with the, with the city and with your support, talked about the transfer and station. And as was indicated earlier, that is in the House bonding bill, which is pretty darned important that it gets in the House bonding bill, and it's there. So what finagling they'll do at the end, but the Senate usually is a little bit more generous than the House, so it's just one of a few requests beyond the refurbishing of buildings and things, so we're really, really fortunate.
Just a thank you to, I know that three of you have been in St. Paul advocating for those dollars. Thanks for doing that. I know Brian and Kirk and Steve Moore from the city, that's quite a phenomenal feat to get in on that, and I, you know, I don't want that to go unrecognized, I guess.
Yeah, it really is. It's amazing. It really is. I had a personnel action, step three grievance, that was last Wednesday or Tuesday, no, it was after this, it was Tuesday, and so working through that. Darren and I are co-facilitating that planning session, so we've done some work on that and putting together some ideas and talking points. We had a meeting on the scheduling of the ribbon cutting, that's already been talked about. I did take a couple of days vacation last week, so I thank you for that opportunity, and not to brag, but my granddaughter now is a doctor of dentistry. Yes, I am going to brag a little bit. It's quite an accomplishment.
It's a big feat.
It was a big deal, and pretty proud of her. The chair and Jennifer and I, as Commissioner Mojo had mentioned, we met after the board meeting last week to talk about the very thing we discussed here today. And digging out the budget documents, because the end of May, we'll come bring it to you as far as getting some general direction, and then we'll start sending out the information and start compiling the documentation for 2019 already. Isn't it just unbelievable? Fast time goes, jeepers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, anything else? All right, if not, we are adjourned. Thank you.